Good evening. This meeting of May 13, 2024 is reconvening. We had a special meeting, closed session prior to this. We are now reconvening to regular session. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance from our friends at Kennedy Elementary School. Please introduce yourself and say what grade you're in.
My name is Olivia and I'm in third grade.
My name is Allison and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Naomi and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Carolyn and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Ellen and I am in second grade.
My name is Bailey and I'm in fifth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8, 2024, and the special board meeting of May 6, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8, 2024, the special board meeting, May 6, 2024, as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
Ms. Whitman, can we do our board salutes?
We, next is public hearing. If someone would like to read the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearing of budget amendment for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And Mr. Callaher would like to give us an update on the current budget.
Evening, board members and Superintendent Hawkins. At this time of year, we always review what our current expenditures are for this fiscal year and compare that to what we had estimated our budget would be when we did it back in February of 2023. Looking at where we are, our current expenditures are, we do need to amend it for a couple of reasons. One is our bus purchases from the prior fiscal year where it was budgeted did not come in in that fiscal year. They actually came in in July. So, we paid for it in July, not the fiscal year. Didn't account for that in our estimate, budget estimate, so we have to increase it this year because we're paying for it in this fiscal year. The second thing is the preschool out at Medline. That was not in the budget when we did our budget back in February of 2023. So, that project's about $4 million. So, we're increasing that instruction area by $3,500,000. So, those are the two increases to the budget. And again, this does not change any tax levies. That stays the same. This is just, we need to increase our budgets in order to keep within the regulations of the laws. So, that's what you're here for tonight. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of legal notice publications cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. At this time, we have public, we're open for public comment, but only on the budget. So, if you wish to address the budget, please step up to the podium.
Seeing none, I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2023, 2024, as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, as published. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. If there is anyone in the public to wish to adjust the board, but... Yeah, I was, yeah, I was gonna say that. We're gonna, I'm sorry, sir. We're gonna have the principal, Nick Hess of Kennedy Elementary School, first address this, and then you're welcome to come up. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Nick Hess. I am currently the principal of Kennedy Elementary School. I'm actually transitioning my way out this year and will be taking over Marshall next year. Tough, but you know, really confident that I'm making the right move for my own passion and for the district as a whole. So, when I'm thinking about things that are going well at Kennedy, I would say, you know, that the transition and the changes, they're not ever easy, but people are doing a great job of keep, you know, what they always do is, which is keep their eye on kids, you know. Rich Hatcher, who's coming in to take my place, has been around and available to our staff and really been a presence so far. So, I think that is making people feel good about what's coming their way. Another thing that is going really, really well is Jeremy Hoffman, third grade teacher at Kennedy, just one Teacher of the Year. Jeremy is awesome in what he's, what he does. Very calm demeanor, very laid back, but at the same time, he really gets results and connections with kids. He's really enjoying driving the Prius around. So, we just came off Staff Appreciation Week, so that is a big week for our parent group. That would say that has been a great success this year. We have had hired numbers at our parent organization meetings than we've had in the, you know, previous, you know, four years since I've been the principal. Our board coming on next year, a lot of them are younger, are parents of younger children, and they are teaming up with some people that have been on our parent organization board for a number of years and getting ready to transition that over. You know, some of the people that, you know, their kids are aging out of Kennedy have been on that board for a long time. So, it's really nice to have, you know, some fresh ideas and just, you know, new people engaged and involved with Kennedy. So, you said, that's kinda Kennedy right now. So, it's always a busy place, but a lot, everybody in that building cares, so.
Well, thank you, Nick, for being the principal and leader at Kennedy School. And I look forward to, or we look forward to seeing how well you're gonna do at Marshall.
All right. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment that we had our teacher recognition awards night last Thursday, and Nick was chosen as the team award. And so, that's a nomination from his staff. And so, they really appreciate Nick and everything he's done the last five years at Kennedy. So, he gave a very, very emotional speech. It was wonderful, but congratulations to you for that piece as well.
Thank you.
And now, anyone in the public that wishes to address the board, please come forward. Please state your name and your affiliation with the district. And there's a timer there for three minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Art Roach. My address is 5451 Meadow Court in Asbury, so I live within the district. Part of my affiliation with the district is Kennedy School. My, some of my kids attended Kennedy School a couple of lifetimes ago. I was a Cub Scout leader there. So, Kennedy School's a hard, is a hard act to follow. Very briefly, I'm here representing a couple of organizations. I'm the Chair of Iowans for Gun Safety. It's a statewide organization that's concerned about the interface between state legislation in Iowa and the prevention of gun violence. I'm also here representing the Coalition for Nonviolence, which is a similar locally based organization here in Dubuque, also concerned with preventing gun violence. You'll see Representative NAACP, and I'm not sure if there's other organizations that are also affiliated with us in spirit. I'm here just basically to thank those of you who have already decided that should the opportunity come up, you are not going to choose to arm teachers in the school district or other employees of the school district. And there's a number of reasons why we think this is a bad idea. I'm just gonna pose a couple of questions about sort of what-if questions, and I'll honor my time limit. I'm almost done now. So, will parents know if the teachers and other district employees that their children encounter have a gun if this was enacted in this school district? Can parents transfer a child to another classroom if they learn that their teacher or the teacher of their children or other people in that classroom have a gun? Where will guns be stored if they are allowed in the schools? Can school personnel carry a gun on school property? If guns are securely stored in the school, then how can they be useful in a shooter incident? How can they be quickly accessed? How will law enforcement be able to differentiate between legally armed school personnel from shooters? And finally, will your insurance company truly indemnify you, and by you, I mean us also taxpayers, in the event of an improper shooting by a school employee? So, those are just a few of the many questions that were asked and not carefully enough responded to, in my opinion, of the people that were proposing this bill in legislature this fall. It was, however, signed on April 19 by Governor Kim Reynolds. So, it's the law of the land. If we want to exercise it, we are asking you to please don't exercise it in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your questions.
No, no.
No, I said, thank you for posing those questions. No, no. We're not able to engage back and forth, but we appreciate you bringing up those questions. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. Now, we will move on to School Board Recognition Month, and Amy Hawkins has some topics to bring up and recognize.
Good evening, board members and community members. I'm up here with great excitement and appreciation for all of you, for everything that you do for our district. As you know, the people sitting here in front of you, they get paid a lot of money to be school board members. No, I'm just joking.
Not.
So, really, it's a volunteer position that puts in a lot of time and energy to make sure that our schools are safe, they're welcoming environment, and that the curriculum that we teach is on track, that our budget is on track. They're always checking Kevin. They don't really trust him that much sometimes. But really, I think people, once they become board members, they understand what a large organization we are. You know, an organization that has, you know, about 10,000 students and over 2,000 employees, there's a lot of things going on and a lot of moving parts. So, I just wanted to say personally, thank you for all the time that you dedicate to our school district and to our staff and to our community. And thank you for everything that you do, the decisions that you make, and always doing what's best for kids. So, I appreciate you very much, and I want here to give you an award to say thanks for your service on the board. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Lise.
Thank you, ma'am.
Your first one, Sarah? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. We appreciate having a wonderful superintendent that helps lead us, and we can work closely with her, and we appreciate that. Makes our jobs easier. Okay, now we will move on to board salutes. I know there's a few of them.
Thanks. That's my favorite part. A board salute goes out to everyone involved in this year's elementary school track meet, which was another tremendous event held at Dahlzell Field on May 6. This event brought together nearly 600 4th and 5th grade students for a great night of competition and sportsmanship. Thanks to a partnership with the city of Dubuque, these students spent the weeks leading up to the event practicing together after school to prepare for the event. Excited teams arrived at Dahlzell Field, and the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools provided a free power-up snack for each participant. During the event, the 4x100 meter relay race was officially named the Jesse Freiberger Memorial 4x100 Relay. This was to honor former Principal Jesse Freiberger, who was instrumental in this meet's success for the past decade, and sadly, who passed from cancer last year. The night concluded with a signature moment when Sageville Elementary School was named the recipient of this year's Dick White Sportsmanship Award, awarded annually to the school exhibiting the most outstanding sportsmanship. Congratulations to all involved in another great event.
It was a wonderful night, and I see Carmella's here, and she was one of our volunteers. So, thanks for volunteering too.
Next up, congratulations to Hempstead High School student Dawson Fish and Dubuque Senior High School student Caitlin Kono, who were both named recipients of National Merit $2,500 scholarships in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. Dawson and Caitlin were among 2,500 students chosen out of a finalist pool of 15,000 students for the scholarship. The National Merit Organization said scholarship recipients were judged to have the strongest combination of accomplishments, skills, and potential for success in rigorous college studies among the finalists in each state. Congratulations to Dawson and Caitlin on this outstanding accomplishment. We are proud to have you represent the Dubuque Community School District and our entire community.
Nancy, I believe you have one.
I do. Our district has remained committed to providing students with the opportunity to gain college-level credits while they're still attending high school. And this really can only happen because of wonderful partnerships that we have with Northeast Iowa Community College, as well as with our other higher education institutions in this community. As we've continued these efforts, I'm delighted to be able to deliver the board salute that goes to all involved in making college coursework opportunities accessible to our high school students. I have wonderful numbers to share with you. I'm delighted to be able to do that. In particular, our partners at NICC shared with us recently that graduates in the graduating class of 2024 earned an amazing 2,832.5 credits from NICC. I think that's amazing. This means that at NICC's 2024-25 tuition rate, which is a reasonable $205 per credit, our students saved a combined $569,332 in college tuition. That is remarkable. This is important work that will continue into the future happily because of these partnerships, and we are proud of our district's work as a partner and grateful for the work of our partners in making that happen and making it possible for our students to have these pathways to success. So, thank you to all of our higher ed institutions with whom we partner and with NICC in particular. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. That program continues to grow more and more every year. Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board member at this time that wishes to remove any items from the agenda? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. Now, we move on to the Facilities Support Committee Meeting Report. I will give that report. I'm the committee head for the facilities meeting. We had four projects that were approved. Well, they'll get approved tonight, I'm sorry, that were discussed. So, number one was a donation of a Gaga ball pit to Prescott Elementary School. The high school robotics club proposed to do a fundraiser and construct a Gaga ball pit outside the Prescott Elementary School. The project's gonna cost about $1,900, and they'll be raising the funds for that. And it's one of our elementary schools that does not have a Gaga pit yet, so I think we're gonna have them all covered pretty soon.
Yep, pretty close.
The next donation for outdoor sculpture at Audubon Elementary School. The city of Dubuque was partnered with the University of Iowa Art Department to bring sculptures to Dubuque. This large piece of art will be installed outside the building entrance at Audubon Elementary School and was made from recycled playground equipment. It's not from the Audubon playground equipment, but some playground equipment somewhere, but it's ironic that we are getting new playground equipment at Audubon. The project will cost approximately $5,000. And the school district's not paying for that. That's being donated. Next project is the donation of a memory bench and a tree at Roosevelt Middle School. Cash donations from businesses, current and former staff to purchase two benches along with a donated tree, I believe it's gonna be a willow tree, at Roosevelt Middle School by the baseball field in memory of the staff member Jesse Freiberger, who passed away. That estimated cost of that project is $400. And the next project was a donation of a little library to Kennedy Elementary School. The Girl Scout Troop 1414 to install a little library in front of Kennedy Elementary School. The project is estimated to cost about $160. And since Kennedy is, you know, the neighborhood's there, this will be a great walking distance for people to get the books. We got an update on district projects. Seniors going well. It's 98.6 complete. They're working a lot on filling the west parking lot. Everything should be done prior to the start of school for the 24-25 school year, and the project, as always, has been on budget and still continues to be on budget. Sageville Elementary School project, the construction of the solar project is complete, and they're still working on some firewall issues, but they're, then we can apply for some federal investment tax credits, but that's being worked on. Lincoln Elementary Outdoor Wellness Project, all the parts and pieces have been ordered and should arrive in mid-May. The project will begin when school is out and should be completed before the end of the summer. And the senior Dahlzell Field scoreboard replacement, we got an update from Nick Rettenberger from Oregon Design, and we have a certificate of completion, and it's a wonderful scoreboard. So, if any of you have an opportunity to go to an event at Dahlzell Field, at track meets, you get to see the athletes' names, their times, everything is quickly updated there. It's wonderful. Preschool renovation project, site work has started, and if you drive by, you can see some of the playground equipment already being installed. It looks wonderful. So, that continues to be ongoing, and they'll be starting the school at the end of the summer. They'll start the preschool program there. Audubon Playground Equipment, work will begin soon as school is out, and they're getting new playground equipment. Eisenhower Gym Edition, preliminary planning and design for the addition includes art and a music area. And they're looking at designs for additional options and locations. Construction should be completed in the fall of '25-'26. So, they're in the planning stages right now. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project, that's scheduled to review some options that make sense with the budget and long-term operational costs. Construction should be completed by the end of '25-'26 school year. Synergistics, we got an update on that. We reviewed the lunch and breakfast fees for '24-'25. There was no changes for the children or for the adults. And preschool fees, Kevin Callaher stated that the preschool fees will go up $10 a month. That's the only increase. And now, we have some facilities support recommendations to vote on.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from High School Robotics Club of a Gaga ball pit to Prescott Elementary School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from High School Robotics Club of the Gaga ball pit to the Prescott Elementary School. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from city of Dubuque and the University of Iowa Art Department of an outdoor art sculpture created by University of Iowa student Jamie Weinfurter to Audubon Elementary School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from the city of Dubuque and the University of Iowa Art Department of an outdoor art sculpture created by University of Iowa student Jamie Weinfurter to Audubon Elementary School. All those, or any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from local businesses, current and former Roosevelt staff, of a tree and two benches in memorial of Jesse Freiberger to Roosevelt Middle School.
Second.
It has moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from local businesses, current and former Roosevelt staff, of a tree and two benches in memorial of Jesse Freiberger to Roosevelt Middle School. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from Girl Scout Troop 1414 of a little library to Kennedy Elementary School.
Second.
It has been moved and passed, moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Girl Scout Troop 1414 of a little library to Kennedy Elementary School. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Dahlzell Video Board Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project costs to Ardent Lighting Group LLC in the amount of $15,352.62 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Dahlzell Video Board Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Ardent Lighting Group LLC in the amount of $15,352.62 in accordance with the requirements of the Iowa law and is more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Epic Furniture and Install for the preschool center furniture, fixtures, equipment project in the amount of $125,601.75.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Epic Furniture and Install for the preschool center furniture, fixtures, and equipment project in the amount of $125,601.75. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Sheetz Design Build on the preschool center renovation project in the increased amount of $36,852.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Sheetz Design Build on the preschool center renovation project in the increased amount of $36,852. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the preschool fees for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the preschool fees for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
Just a comment about that, if I might. The $10 increase in fees for preschool is for a very, very small number of students who fall outside of the state funding for the four-year-old preschool. So know that we are not, there is not a fee for attending four-year-old preschool.
That is true.
Unless you're starting the year as a five-year-old.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Just don't want to get parents nervous about.
I know, we all take it for granted. Yeah, no, it's for those that are choosing to pay to have a five-year-old attend. Okay. One more motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the sale of a 2016 International School Bus to Northeast Iowa Community College, NICC, for $10,500.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the sale of the 2016 International School Bus to Northeast Iowa Community College, NICC, for $10,500. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes.
If I could just make one more comment, I feel at a time like this, like we look like we don't bother to talk about these things. We spent an entire long committee meeting going through the basis of need, the competitive bidding, the specs, and all of the information about these projects. Tonight, our task is just to approve what we already talked about, so we do give it consideration.
Thanks again, Nancy, we appreciate your comments. Okay, now we move on to the Educational Program Policy Committee. That report will be given by Katie Jones.
Thank you. Let's see, to begin with, we have reached, the district has reached an agreement with the Dubuque Education Association with a base increase of $300, total salary and benefits increase for the staff of 2.51%. Now I will be bringing forward a motion after our report to officially approve that. We also heard that we will be receiving a new health curriculum, including textbooks, and, which includes a seven-year access at a six-year estimated cost of $114,667.67. That purchase is going to be through Goodheart Wilcox Publishers for grades 6 through 12. Then, we did hear an update on our working draft of our five-year strategic plan from Superintendent Amy Hawkins and Chief Communications Officer Michael Siz, Mike Siz, sorry, Mike. In constructing the new plan, the executive team looked at what sets our district apart from others' districts in the area, and while also addressing what it takes to make our students life-ready. Goal areas of this strategic plan include student achievement and development, family and community engagement, effective resource management, and employee excellence. Action steps were chosen to provide the focus needed to deeply integrate the work across the district just to support student success. Input from the district leadership, parents, and students have helped shape this plan. And then the next step will be priority initiatives, which we will be working on or hearing about at the May 29th meeting, and that'll be here at the forum, right, Amy?
Correct.
Okay. So everyone is welcome to attend that. And, let's see. Superintendent Hawkins also gave us a summary of the legislative session and updated the committee on bills that were signed into law. These bills include the AEA bill, teacher pay, social studies curriculum, and guns in the classroom. And I just wanted to, we've received a lot of feedback on particularly the guns in the classroom. And I just want to make it clear to the public that collectively, as a board, we do oppose guns in the classroom, and with Superintendent Amy Hawkins, and instead are going to be working to expand our school resource officer program in the upcoming year. Lastly, we also approved several policies. And our next meeting will be on Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. Those are at 4 o'clock here at the forum, so we welcome everyone to attend. And then, my recommendation would be I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? Brian? Brian Cool, head of our HR department here at Dubuque Schools.
Good evening. I'm very happy to report that we have such a strong relationship with the Education Association, and we worked collaboratively to come up with something. As you know, with the change in pay structure across the state, that we had to put our heads together and come up with something that was going to work for everybody. As you know, that next year, the lowest pay for a teacher in the state of Iowa will be $47,500, and anyone that has 12 years or more of experience will make $60,000. So taking that into consideration, the state gave money for the teachers that were not at that $47,500 or were not at that $60,000. So the money did not come in across the board to everybody. So we had to take a look at not just the base wage, but also the longevity indices. So everybody gets a little bit more money there, as opposed to some people getting $8,000 and some people not getting much at all. So we worked together in collaboration, and I'm very proud to say that we came up with a solution that I think worked well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. Thanks, Katie.
Superintendent Hawkins, did you tell us that there is a communication going out about the guns in the classrooms and the SRO officers?
Yes, there is, that'll be going out to our families and our staff. Mr. Siz, I was going to call him Mike Siz, has been working on that communication to be going out, yes.
Just so, just to build on what you were saying, Katie, that this board is pretty clear about where it is, and we appreciate that Superintendent Hawkins is as well.
All right, we will move on to new business.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing the Marshallese Constitution Day and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing the Marshallese Constitution Day and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board. I will read that proclamation now. Whereas the citizens... Okay. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the citizens of the Republic of the Marshall Islands celebrate their Constitution Day on May 1st each year to commemorate the day of 45 years ago when a new constitution was adopted and status as an independent republic was achieved. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District and our greater community benefit from the very vibrant Marshallese community that is rich with tradition, and whereas celebration of Marshallese Constitution Day in the Marshall Islands would traditionally be focused on island culture with games of tug-of-war, husking a coconut, which we don't have in Dubuque, and canoe racing. And in the United States, it's celebrated with basketball, softball, and volleyball tournaments. Whereas, the observance of Marshallese Constitution Day in the United States is held on the third-day Memorial Day weekend, and the Marshallese community will recognize it with a celebration open to all members of the Dubuque community. Now therefore, I, Lisa Whitman, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School Board of the Education, do hereby proclaim May 1st and Memorial Day weekend as a celebration of Marshallese Constitution Day.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 1416715615 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 1416715615 at this time. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? That motion passes. I would, now we're at the end of our meeting, but I would like to give a reminder that we have 2024 commencement ceremonies. Friday, May 24th, at Roosevelt Middle School, the last auditorium at 6:00 PM will be the Dubuque Online School commencement. And on Saturday, May 25th, at Dolls Al Field, at 10:00 AM will be Hempstead High School commencement, and at 3:00 PM will be senior high school commencement. So commencement, so if anyone is able to attend their wonderful programs, and we look forward to good weather on May 25th, since it's outside.
That's right, Mr. Burns, good weather, you heard it.
This meeting is adjourned. Is there any other comments to be said? We are adjourned, thank you.